Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Alright, that's cancelled.
There.
Testing, testing.
We can hear you.
Morning, sir. Good morning, good morning. Commissioner Lippman.
I forgot, I'm on Florida time, I'm sorry.
Do we have all our commissioners here? I know Commissioner Malone is not going to be with us tonight. Who are we missing? Anybody?
I think Commissioner Malone is the only one we are missing.
Okay, with that, it is six o'clock, actually it's 6:01, I'm going to call this meeting to order. We are now in our meeting. Can we all stand and do the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Tonight's indication is going to be offered by Commissioner Good. There you are, sir. Would you please provide us with our indication, sir? And I thank you for this. John, you're muted.
Let us pray. Bylaw, class, order, family, genus, and species. We are all mammals, we are all homo sapiens. Science does not clarify us further. Man has added ethnicity and other classes within those that are not recognized by science. But we are all still homo sapiens. So let us all be kind to one another, and all you need is love. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Roll call, please, Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Burr.
Present.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
Commissioner Wiki.
Here.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Lippman.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mullins. Mayor Heil.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. The next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, and we have a proclamation, excuse me. Arbor Day proclamation, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything in particular prepared. I can just like to share that it does take a considerable amount of time each year to be recognized as a Tree City and Arbor Day Foundation member. So I'd like to compliment and thank the staff for their efforts in making sure that we remain conscious and aware of our obligations as a Tree City USA member.
Does anyone want me to read the proclamation that was provided in our packet? If not, we will move on to the next proclamation. Seeing no hands go up, I will not read that proclamation then. Thank you, Josh. The next proclamation is a Fair Housing Month proclamation offered by Andrew.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you included in your packet was a Fair Housing Month proclamation. This is done as part of our recognition of the Fair Housing Act and the goal of eliminating housing segregation, done as part of our qualifications for CDBG programs. So just wanted to acknowledge that, and as I said, the proclamation was included in your packet.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. The next item on our agenda is visitors. If there is anybody in our audience tonight that would like to bring something to the commission that is not on our agenda, this is the time to do that. Andrew, would you please?
Sure, so for those of you joining via the Zoom meeting, you can use the raise hand feature and we'll acknowledge you for public comment if you have something to bring to the commission that is not listed on tonight's agenda. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I will take the approval of the agenda, please.
Your Honor, I move for approval of tonight's agenda for April 14th, 2021.
Second that.
Can I have a second? Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, we need to have that include the omission of item 10D, since that was removed.
So Skip, you want to change your motion, because we are going to take out item number 10D.
Okay, can I just say with the addition of item 10D, because I didn't have it on my roster here?
That's okay. And I think, okay, and Commissioner-
Not add an 8G as well?
That's under the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And I think Commissioner Klinger, you second Skip's motion, correct?
And I also second the addition of the omitting of item 10D.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Next item is I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Your Honor, I move next to approve the consent agenda also for Wednesday, April 14th, 2021, as presented.
Thank you, what do we have, support?
Support.
Okay, I got Commissioner Smith. I have a motion by Commissioner Lippman and support by Commissioner Smith to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Klinger. Yes. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone. Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. The next item is unfinished business. There is none, so we will move down to the due business section. The first item on our agenda is the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Board Appointment. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you have an application in your packet from somebody I think you're fairly familiar with, Kathy Abs, obviously, with her retirement is not wasted any time to get involved, continue her involvement with the city. So she is expressed interest in serving as a marketing person on the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Board, and there are no other applications. As it said in your manager's report, Nate Mackin is willing to move over to the finance portion of that board, and Kathy will do lead the marketing team. Any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Any questions on this agenda item? Any of the commissioners? See none, are there any questions? There was Andrew, any questions from our audience?
I do see a hand raised from Commissioner Klinger.
Okay, sorry about that. Come back to Commissioner Klinger.
No, no, no real questions, just wanted to say I'm happy to see this, happy to see that she got bored already and couldn't stay away too long, especially specifically for the Center for the Arts and how we're moving so swiftly with that. She's just going to be another strong hand in the play of that growth, so happy to see this, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to ask our audience, Andrew, if they have any questions out there, if there's anybody that has a question?
Sure, so for anybody attending via the Zoom meeting, if you have a public comment on this agenda item or a question, please use the raise hand feature at this time. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. What say the commission on this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission appoint Kathy Abs to the Sturgis Young Center for the Arts Board of Directors for a term expiring in May 2022.
You have a motion-
Mr. Good will support that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Klinger, support by Commissioner Good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone. Oh, we had Commissioner Burr.
He's froze.
Okay. See if he can come back. Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Okay, that's a seven to nothing, motion carries regardless, and Commissioner Burr wants to give his vote later, that's fine.
Alright, Andrew, do you want to text Commissioner Burr to see if he is aware he is frozen? Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is the Marijuana Ordinance Amendment. City Manager Hughes.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we have a couple proposed ordinance amendments for your consideration. One of the areas in looking at stack permits is that really some of the application review and processing work for additional stack permits doesn't take, I think, the amount of time that would justify the permit fee. And so we're proposing a modification of the ordinance that would categorize the stack permits into minor and major. And for the minor permit, that wouldn't require any changes to the building and so forth, that there would be a $500 review fee and then a $500 permit application fee for each stacked license. For major permits, there would be a $500 application fee and then a $2,500 stack permit fee. The other issue, talk a little bit more about it, is putting in place a formal permit extension in the ordinance. So we've have a number of projects that have ran into a variety of issues, and we think it makes sense to formalize in the ordinance the ability to apply for extension. And that would be submitted to the City Commission for consideration. And so we have a red line version of the proposed amendments for both medical and adult use, and then, of course, a modification to the marijuana ordinance fees. So at this point, I'd ask if there's any questions on what we provided.
Mr. Klinger, your hand is raised.
Yeah, a few questions. So regarding the permit application fees and the stacked license permit fees that we're looking at shifting, are these fees consistent with other municipalities in the state with this same sort of situation as far as stacked permits go?
Will might be able to speak to that better, but based on what I know, I think there's ongoing discussion about this issue and discussing, you know, really whether the $5,000 permit fee is justifiable. I can't speak to exactly how this matches up with other municipalities, but I know this is definitely a consideration.
I know it's very much a fluid discussion, I was just wondering if there was any study on what other municipalities may be doing in this kind of situation, too.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks commissioners. Yeah, when we were looking at this, the numbers are a little all over the board right now. There's other municipalities looking at lowering their permit fees. So as we've done some now, we kind of have an idea of what it's taking for us to do the review, so we actually kind of just use some real-time values that we have used from staff side to come up with our numbers. So that's how we came up with our number. Yeah, I mean, we were able to, rather than just pulling a number out of the hat, we could see what we're getting into in the time it takes and the number of staff members involved.
Okay, great, good to hear. Appreciate that. And then, as far as the extensions go for the, you know, the building permits and construction hurdles, was there, were we looking to create like a limit to that extension? Like, is that extension 12 months, is it six months? Is there two six-month periods, and there's a grace period of a window of 12 months that we allow to? Was there like some sort of framework for that, or was it just going to kind of be a circumstantial thing?
I think the way we set it up in the ordinance, it would be circumstantial, and, you know, when someone comes to you and asks for an extension, they should, you know, give you their progress on their project and expected completion time. And so we've left that open in the proposed amendment.
Okay, alright, thank you, that should be all.
I will say, you know, and I've talked with a number of people that, I mean, these projects, because of the regulations, are more complicated. And so, you know, of course, there's a lot of, I think, newness for people as they discover how to navigate that, and then also, you know, just the regular building construction codes. So we're in a, I mean, in this first period, there's a lot of, I think, learning, probably on both sides. I do have another item to address, and I'll just mention this maybe before you consider the amendments, but it's related to the same issue. So we have a number of projects out there, and if you recall, I came to you a number of months ago, I think we're approaching six months ago, talking about an extension related to COVID. We had, of course, shut down, and there's a backlog of materials and contractors, and of course, even design professionals. And so we have a number of projects out there that their permits are going to expire. That's part of what was driving us to bring this amendment to you, but at the same time, even if you decide to move forward with allowing a formal process for an extension, there are a number of projects will expire before that could be adopted. And so I wanted to also request this evening that you consider allowing me to provide an additional 60-day extension for those projects that have a permit currently as of this date. And so what that would do is give them a window to be able to come at some point if this ordinance amendment is approved to ask for an extension. And I would also mention that most of these projects are either in construction, close to completing construction, but they haven't, even with the additional six-month extension, haven't been able to complete their projects. I guess if I would have, I would know now about COVID and all of the direct and indirect impacts, maybe we would have suggested a different extension, but unfortunately, I guess I didn't predict that well. So as you consider these ordinances, I'd like you to also consider this 60-day extension as well.
Alright, thank you, Michael. Vice Mayor Mullins, has his hand raised?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick follow-up off of Commissioner Klinger's question there was just the fees that we're talking about here, the decrease in the stacked licenses, because it's kind of repetitive. Will had talked about the fact that we now know what we spend in time and energy and wages and whatever to do all this stuff. So we're lowering any of the stacked ones there and calling them minor, but the major, are we covered on the major then as well? Because I'm a little concerned that lowering as low as we're doing could be problematic in the future. Has there been any, I mean, I'm sure you probably looked at the numbers of the majors as well, and is that well-covered with 5,000?
What's the 2,500, you mean?
Or-
For the major, so the major, we're expecting no changes to like the ownership, the background checks, the state documents that they're providing, that all of that review takes a lot of time, operating agreements, doing business as, all of those documents are the same. We might have some, maybe a potential site plan change, which they'll have to go through a site plan approval process for, or maybe some interior building modifications that we'll have to go through, but nothing like the initial Class C grow license we'll have to go through.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, I just, was this brought up by companies in our town that are trying to get things going and wanting to go for that stack and came to you with a request to lower this?
People have mentioned it, if, you know, if the city's been looking at it, because it's been going around out there, the people are, the more that they're doing, these people are noticing that, you know, you're supposed to be able to justify your cost. So that's when people are starting, you know, other municipalities are reaching out to us, we're reaching out to them to try to just figure out what people are looking at.
Okay, and you said to try to justify your costs, is that something that the state had asked for at the beginning of all this stuff as well?
It's in the ordinance, like the state law.
Okay.
That the application fees are, you're supposed to be able to justify.
Okay, so going from, you know, the numbers that you were looking at here, you had an original permit fee of $4,500 with the documentation fee, a total of 5,000, right? If you're looking at renewing, you're cutting that basically in half for the major. I guess that-
So a major, so there would be only the initial application, I would think, if they're not doing anything on their renewal, they would just pay the $500 fee. They're paying their initial 5,000 for their first Class C, and then all the stacked licenses beyond that would be 500. On their renewals.
Okay, it just, you know, just cutting as much as we were, that we're talking about doing here, it just seems that it's, it just seems like quite the slash, I guess, is all, so. I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Good, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I looked over the ordinance, I saw the changes in the fees. I believe that anything that can be done to alleviate bureaucratic overburdens on applicants is a fine thing. And I think, you know, I'm always one for avoiding repetitive redundancy. And so I would think that it would be a positive move toward those that are attempting to establish the stacked licenses. And I just think it's the right move to make. And also the city manager's ability to grant that 60-day extension in order to facilitate the time passage for adoption of the amendments. I think that would fall under the local emergency order that we put in place at the last meeting. You know, so because of the COVID-19, we have a local state of emergency, and the power that we could give to the manager for that 60-day extension would certainly fit within the parameters of that particular issue. And so I just think that, you know, that we're doing the right thing here if we consider this the first reading. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Commissioner Wiki. Your hand is raised.
I guess I just have a few comments. You know, as far as justifying the cost, I think we also have to think about planning ahead, not necessarily what we can see face value right now. You know, crime rate and homelessness increases, we may need to hire additional police force and then figure out, you know, with homelessness, too, what to do with the extra. I just think that the fees are warranted, because we may have to deal with some messes coming, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Klinger.
Yeah, I guess I had a question for Will. You know, you said you had kind of done the due diligence of figuring out the man-hours and time. I guess I was just kind of getting a detailed question in. I guess, did you guys just boil it down to see that it was just kind of a multitude of the same application? Is that kind of- a multitude of the same application? Is that kind of what you guys reduced? You like got down to like your conclusion is that it's just the same application a few times over? And this is like a reason that it-
Exactly. Exactly. They're just the same, same application, same, same everything.
Everything matches up. Okay. I, yeah, I, I, I was, I was just kind of curious. Uh, and, uh, I, to the, uh, to the ext- uh, the sixty day extension, um, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just a tad curious, um, how many permits are out there that would expire within, possibly expire within that time period? I mean, is there a, a handful of them or numerous or a couple that are very key? Uh, you know, no details necessary, just kind of curious like as to what would, uh, warrant an emergency need? That's all.
Yeah, I believe there are five.
That's enough. All right. All right. Uh, yeah, I, I'm glad that we've got that ability to be able to take care of something like this at a moment's notice, you know, to earmark something. Uh, you know, this seems like a good step forward regardless, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klinger. Um, if there are no other questions from the commission, Andrew, would you ask our audience to, uh, if they have questions?
Yes, if we have any members of the audience, uh, participating via the Zoom meeting, if you have any comments on this particular agenda item, please use the raise hand feature and we'll recognize you at this time. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, seeing no other hands from the commission, what say the commission? And we have two motions here.
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Good. I would move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the first reading of amendments for the City Code of Ordinance, Section thirty-eight dash ninety-two Medical Marijuana Facilities and Section thirty-eight dash ninety-three Adult Use Marijuana Establishments as presented.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Good, uh, makes a motion to, uh, consider this. Do I have support?
Vice Mayor Mullins will support.
Thank you, sir. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Klinger. Yes. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, I didn't get your, uh-
You're muted. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lemon.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
No.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Seven oh one, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. And as for the next second motion on this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Good, I would move that the Sturgis City Commission approve the changes to the marijuana ordinance fees as presented.
Uh, Commissioner Good, uh, most approves, uh, makes a motion to approve. Do we have support?
I'll support from Commissioner Klinger.
Uh, Commissioner Smith went, got, got there first. So, uh, Commissioner Smith, uh, seconds the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lemon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
No.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
No.
Mayor Heil.
No.
Five to three, motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, thank you all. The next item on our agenda-
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you think we need a motion to authorize the city manager to provide those extensions?
Yeah, I would like that to allow, um, media approves additional sixty day extension for marijuana applicants that on April fourteenth. Have both-
So more.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have support. Uh, motion by Commissioner Good for what Michael was saying, and who seconded that?
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Vice Mayor Mullins, sir. Vice Mayor Mullins, support. Do you want to read the motion again, Mr. Uh, Rhodes, or is everyone satisfied with it?
I think I can read something. Hold on. Um, allow the city manager to approve an additional sixty day extension for marijuana applicants that on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one have both a permit from the city and an approved building permit.
Okay, and Commissioner Good most, uh, approved, made the motion to approve and Comis- and Vice Mayor Mullins support. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone. Commissioner Wiki.
No.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Lemon.
No.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Six to two, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Um, I think we got everything covered now on that. The next item on our agenda is the fire truck purchase and financing. Uh, Ryan and Holly.
Thank you.
Is Ryan a muted? I can't hear him.
He is not muted.
I can't hear him either.
I cannot hear him either.
How about now?
I am perfect.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. I'm going to try to share my screen here, uh, as we work through some of this information. Can everyone see that information? That screen? Okay.
Picture of a fire truck, yes.
All right, then we're on the right screen then. All right. In January of this year, I came to you seeking permission to solicit bids, uh, for this project, the replacement of our existing, uh, two thousand Pierce ninety-five foot mid aerial, uh, earlier than the post-budget year. Now, the purpose for this was the extended build time a truck of the size and complexity requires. Upon receiving permission, we sent out bid specifications on January twenty-seventh and conducted a bid opening on March first. We received three complete bids for a one hundred foot mid-mout aerial. Attachment A, uh, in your commission packet, contains a comparison of all three bids, uh, with emergency vehicles plus, uh, and Rosenbauer America coming in with a low bid at one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. And halt fire with Pierce Manufacturing having the high bid at one million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Deputy Director Strudwick and Ives, along with Dennis Hetman, have spent considerable time reviewing the bids and have spoken with several departments that own similar models of each truck. Uh, as part of this review process, we visited the factory of each ma- of the manufacturers to gain a better understanding of the assembly process, maintenance and support capabilities, and company cultures. Uh, we, we all felt it was important to understand, uh, all these aspects. Uh, as purchasing a vehicle of this cost, uh, and service life of twenty-five years enters, enters us into a professional relationship with these companies, uh, for the foreseeable future. After truck evaluations and factory visits, we were in agreement that the Rosenbauer one hundred foot mid-mout aerial was the best fit, um, was the best fit for the needs that we have outlined, uh, during our bid specification process. During evaluations, uh, during evaluations and factory tours, uh, we made a few additions and subtractions to the original bid as outlined in attachment A. The, uh, final, the final pre-discount price with those changes is one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Three hundred and seventy-three dollars, excuse me. In our previous presentation to you, we talked about the NFPA standard requiring annual testing of the ladder and the implications if that ladder were to fail testing for structural integrity after the warranty period. You know, Commissioner Burr had asked during our previous presentation about the ability to obtain a warranty, uh, of twenty-five years on that aerial. Uh, and our recommended apparatus does come with a twenty-five year aerial warranty. Uh, this maximizes the NFPA service life while gra- greatly reducing the city's exposure for costly repairs, uh, during the last five years of service. As we reviewed bids and toured factories and trucks, several areas stood out to us that aided our decision-making process. One of the big things that we noted with the Rosenbauer, uh, recommended apparatus here, um, was living in Michigan, we deal with salt, uh, and corrosion, uh, almost in all of our vehicles. Uh, the Rosenbauer has or offers a galvanized frame, galvanized torque box, and galvanized ladder. Uh, the galvanizing process is essentially a protective coating on all those pieces that limits, um, the corrosion and offers Rosenbauer and allows Rosenbauer to offer us a twenty-five year corrosion warranty. I'm not sure if you can hear the tones going off in the background. I apologize if you can. Uh, so that was Rosenbauer to offer a twenty-five year corrosion warranty, uh, which is far superior than any of the other, uh, manufacturers. In fact, Rosenbauer, there's only two of the manufacturers that return bids that could offer, uh, a galvanized frame of any kind, and Rosenbauer was the only one to offer a galvanized torque box and galvanized ladder. Again, this goes, uh, we felt it was important as it deals with the longevity of this vehicle, vehicle that's going to be in our fleet, uh, for an extended period of time. Another area, uh, that stuck out to us with Rosenbauer, um, was the collision protection programmability of the truck. Anytime you have a ladder, uh, that is moving around the vehicle, you have, uh, concerns of your pieces of the truck. Um, the Rosenbauer, as with all arials, offer a cab and body protection system that limits where the ladder and the platform can move uh, as they, uh, as it operates around the vehicle, preventing collisions with the cab. Uh, the nice thing about the Rosenbauer is that it offers a fully programmable, uh, collision protection system. Fully programmable being during a twenty-five year lifecycle, without a doubt, we're going to have additions, um, to the vehicle, whether it be a new light bar, because the old one, uh, while the truck may be built to last twenty-five years, uh, the light bars and some of the other features just, just aren't made to last that long. So as things change on the exterior of the vehicle, whether it be lights, additional equipment added, uh, the service provider, emergency vehicles plus can come out and program that collision avoidance body protection system on scene within a matter of minutes to make sure no matter what we do, we can protect that truck from accidental collisions as we go uh, with that, with, with the platform and, and ladder. We sent several firefighters out to look at different trucks. Uh, we sent a crew of them along with Dennis Hetman over to Warren to look at this truck in operation at Warren Fire Department. One of the things that they noted and, and Deputy Director Strudwick and I noted when we were on site was the ease of use of their aerial control operator. Uh, currently, uh, with a lot of trucks, you're utilizing a three-stick system. So you have a single stick that controls the extend and retract of the ladder. You have a, another stick that controls the up and down movement of the ladder. Then you have another stick that controls the rotation of the ladder. So all three things you're trying to control at the same time. Uh, if you're in a rescue situation, you're trying to get that ladder in place quickly. So you have two hands, three joysticks, you're trying to control at once, uh, requires the operator to have, uh, all their attention really focused on those controls as they work through this. Uh, the Rosenbauer truck actually offers a single joystick operator. So with one hand, firefighter can fully control the truck or where the platform is going at any moment. It frees up hands, it's very intuitive, allows for safer, safer and smoother operations of the truck, uh, which again is a step in the right direction as we advance, um, with technology. It was something that really stood out to us as we worked through this. Another feature of this truck, uh, that stood out, and we had specifically requested in our bid specifications, was, uh, the wireless remote capabilities or remote operations capabilities. Um, a lot of times, a ladder trucker or, or, you know, aerial apparatus allows us to fight fire from a different angle and do a lot of different things, uh, that we can't do from the ground. Uh, he puts firefighters in a good spot to analyze situations and to, uh, suppress fire. But there are certain situations where it may not be safe to put a firefighter up in that platform. Whether it's due to weather conditions, lightning, or if it's maybe a, uh, industrial fire and you have a, uh, large manufacturing facility with fire in the middle, uh, it's not safe to get firefighters, um, inside and we're concerned about fire explosions coming up, we can fully operate this platform, spray water, move it from up to five hundred feet away. Uh, it's a, it's a big safety feature, but also, uh, like a lot of other fire and police departments, a lot of businesses today, uh, there's a staffing shortage and we struggle at times to find people, whether it be on-call, the likes. This allows one person, whether it's our pump operator who's operating the pump panel or the incident commander, uh, to operate that and give us additional fire suppression capabilities, uh, early on on, at a fire scene, uh, when staffing may be limited. Uh, so it's a, it's a safety feature, it allows us to, uh, fight fire better. Um, and is, is a good addition to this truck and, and something we were looking for. Serviceability, uh, with Dennis's involvement in this, uh, we talked about a lot of different things and he really helped us build the specs when it came to the chassis. And you'll see in your, uh, commission packet, uh, all the trucks came back with the same engine transmission as requested by Dennis. One of the problems that we've run into, uh, historically, uh, with fire trucks is a lot of the, uh, components inside of the chassis, um, are proprietary. So something as simple as a switch breaks on the truck, we have to call the company, request a specific part. Sometimes they have it, sometimes they don't. A truck may be out of service because of a vital switch, just simply, um, we're waiting on it to come in. The way Rosenbauer builds their vehicles, majority of the components inside the chassis are available at NAPA and they're non-proprietary. Uh, the vehicle has a USB port where Dennis can plug a computer into it and to download a full parts list, uh, both with the Rosenbauer, uh, America part number as well as the NAPA part number. They do this with the idea that you can get your truck back in service as soon as possible. You know, in New York City where they may have a hundred ladder trucks like this, one being down isn't a big deal. Uh, for us, when we're down this truck, uh, it's, it's a problem. And this allows us to get this vehicle back in service as soon as we can. Also, the truck was designed with service in mind. There's, uh, easily accessible compartments to access the hydraulics, the electronics, um, the wiring that makes servicing the vehicle, uh, faster and easier, uh, than before. Another thing that we, uh, that we liked with this vehicle and was a, uh, a, a big part of our decision-making process, process was the ability for this vehicle to be serviced on-site. Uh, emergency vehicles plus, who is a dealer for this vehicle, uh, operates pretty much seventy-five percent of their time in a, uh, off-site service repair. So they'll send a truck to you and can do seventy-five percent of their maintenance at our fire department. So we don't have to send two firefighters and a truck north, have it sit up there for a while, have to send two people back up, bring it back. Majority of that can be done right on-site here. Um, and so for us, the serviceability and getting that vehicle back in service, um, was, was a big deal. I'll make a quick note. When Andy and I were out in, uh, we traveled to Minnesota and then on to Nebraska, uh, in a two-day window, uh, which was a lot of bumping around. Um, we were out in Nebraska and at where they build the actual ladder facility at. We were walking through the, through the factory and we saw a, a fully finished truck from Fairbanks, Alaska that had the platform removed and a section of the ladder removed. So we were talking to him about, hey, what's this truck doing here? And essentially it was a different style truck than ours. The platform sat out the front. But one of the firefighters had crashed it up in Fairbanks, uh, wrecked the platform and broke part of the fly. Fairbanks had insisted that it come down and get repaired at the, uh, factory. Uh, but they said they had actually offered to build a platform, build a fly section of the ladder, ship all of it up to Fairbanks, Alaska, send their build team up there to repair it on-site, um, to get that truck back in service as soon as possible. Now, for whatever reason, Fairbanks didn't want that. They wanted it to go back to the factory. Um, but that type of service and their willingness to do that and come to you to get your truck back in service, um, is something we haven't typically seen before and was something that I think is pretty indicative of, of their culture and, and their dedication to customer service. Uh, and that, for us, that's, that's huge, keeping these vehicles in service and ready to go. A lot of what we talk about, what we looked at through this, uh, process was identifying things that can keep our firefighters safer, uh, on the fire ground. Um, we know that motor vehicle accidents account for a large, um, percentage of firefighters' deaths every year in this country. Um, I want to talk a little bit about, in your packet, you'll see a, uh, couple pages on it. It's called extruded body. It's how they build the body around, uh, the chassis. Uh, this picture is from a fifty-five mile an hour rear-end collision on a highway semi hit this truck that was parked on the highway at fifty-five miles an hour accident scene. Um, you never would guess that by the amount of damage. Um, but the way they build a body, unlike a lot of trucks where they take a sheet of aluminum, they form it, uh, to the compartment size. Um, and then bolt to the torque box. This is all formed or, uh, molded aluminum that's built specifically for this truck. They have what's called I-beams that run the, the width of the truck that tie this all together. Uh, and it makes it extremely strong and extremely safe, um, for the firefighters. Um, it's something that we haven't seen. We've seen more damage on vehicles, on fire trucks from scraping up against side of a building than this truck. than this truck experienced at fifty-five miles an hour. For us, again, the safety features are big. The other part of the extruding process, how they build the bodies on this truck, is it creates specific channels for all the wiring and everything else. So instead of having wires tucked in behind places, covered up, there are specific channels built for all that, which allows for a clean appearance, less problems, better accessibility and a safer vehicle, more serviceable vehicle. Again, here's another picture of that truck, just kind of give an example of what was done to it at fifty-five miles an hour. Wow, I found it pretty impressive. One of the challenges that we faced during this process, you know, there's NF, we, we talked about NFPA and the National Fire Protection Standards. So all these trucks have the same type of features in terms of how they're made and what they have, capabilities have to be. One of the challenges we faced as we tried to identify the vehicle type that we wanted and from where was some of the challenges with our existing building. We had, we talked to you earlier, I think last time about the overall door height and how it's smaller than most modern fire departments. So we have an overall height issue we have to look with. We also are built on a basement, which creates a unique problem when you're dealing with very heavy trucks. In fact, in two thousand and two, when they purchased our existing truck, that floor had to be reinforced significantly to allow that truck to drive out over it. When we sent out the bids for this, I think with, I know Andy and I both expected the trucks to come back at, at a less weight than our current truck. Figure with technology advancements, things will get smaller and lighter. We were a little surprised to find out that they came back heavier, to two of about eight thousand pounds heavier than our existing truck. We got in contact with structural engineers who did the original design of the reinforcement back in two thousand and two, hoping to get a max weight that, that, that the floor could hold based off of those original calculations. Unfortunately, he was not able to do that at, at this time, he's going to have to go back and do significant calculations based off of the axle weight and a bunch of other things to figure out how much this can hold. So left a problem with, we're not sure if this vehicle can drive out the front of the building. How we addressed that was, you'll see in this, on the picture on your screen, where it says existing concrete floor, the back half of our building is all a poured slab. So where, if we were to back this truck in from the back parking lot, which we tested with our current truck, is more than doable. It allows this truck to sit all of its weight on the slab and not go over the basement at all. It's a safe way for us to get this vehicle into the building without ever going over the floor. In the event that the structural engineer comes back in six to eight weeks and says the, the reinforced floor cannot support the new truck. It's not, end of the world, we're not going to be forced into doing additional reinforcement if we choose not to do that. We have the ability to back it in from the back, pull it out the back without ever driving over the basement or the reinforced floor area. While it's not the preferred method of deployment of this vehicle, based off some of our limitations with our building, it's acceptable to us, it's safe to do so, and it gets the truck in and out of the building with the confines of what we're working with. I know that's a ton of information, I, I kind of left out a lot about the, the engine and transmission, some of that stuff. Dennis is with us today if you have questions on that. I'll be happy to answer a lot of question, any questions you have. I know there is a lot of things you're probably wanting to know, so fire away.
Okay, Commissioner Wiki has his hand raised.
I actually just want to say I appreciate how thorough the presentation was for, you know, such a huge investment. That was just, I really appreciate all the information and, and how, how well it was explained, so thank you.
Mr. Good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, Ryan, are you pitching for a job with Rosenbauer? You certainly are an aficionado with regard to the Rosenbauer ladder truck. But that aside, there are a number of positives that you brought out, one of which was right at the tail end of your presentation with regard to the building. You know, that's one of the restrictions that you're faced with, with so many things that you want to do within that department of public safety. So I appreciate the fact that that was an important consideration when you were putting together specifications. It would be interesting to hear what that engineer may came up with, may come up with with regard to the weight distribution and you may be faced with that alternate parking method, but it's good that you looked into that and brought that issue to a head and it's understandable that you want to provide the best equipment for your department. And I think you've done an extremely thorough job of putting this together. It's, it's interesting to see. I don't, I don't know what, what did we pay for that ladder truck twenty-five years ago in comparison to this one? You know, the rate of inflation for fire trucks must be superior to that for other equipment. But nonetheless, it, it sounds like a truly a superior vehicle and, and I, I look forward to seeing what the commission does with the bid award.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for now. I'll be back in in a few minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bur.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ryan, are all the fire trucks, ladder trucks approximately the same weight as that certain model?
So we had a variety, so they're all heavier gross vehicle weight rating than our existing truck. The Rosenbauer has a gross vehicle weight rating eighty-seven thousand pounds. The Pierce that was bid had a gross vehicle weight rating of seventy-nine thousand pounds. And the Spartan Smee, the other bidder, had a gross vehicle weight rating of around eighty-two thousand pounds. So they're all over our existing truck, depending on the amount over based off of who the manufacturer was.
So what would you attribute the, the difference from eighty-seven to seventy-nine? What, what's, what's the extra factor that's?
Yeah, Andy, Jack Strubek's back here, he has an answer for that for you.
Yes, Mr. Bur, we believe it's because of the construction. When you, when you look at, when you look at that rear impact, you can see that there was not too much intrusion on the, on the actual vehicle. And we believe because they're making a more solid truck, it's got more steel in it, it's got more aluminum in it. We believe it's heavier because it's better built.
Okay, just more metal in it, huh? Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, was it Fairbanks is the one, the company that will come to work on it?
No, so Fairbanks, Alaska was, was the crash their vehicle. Emergency Vehicles Plus is a dealer that we are going through for this, that is who would service the vehicle there, Rosenbauer Authorized Service Center.
Okay, so they would come and they could, they're available to fix seventy-five percent of that onsite?
Yep. So seventy-five percent of the general maintenance, of general, you know, yearly maintenance, repairs on the truck. Now, when we talk about the Fairbanks, Alaska situation where that vehicle was actually crashed, Rosenbauer America would actually get involved to that point. If you're talking something structural with it, with the ladder, the aerial piece of it, Rosenbauer America will become involved, that goes beyond Emergency Vehicles Plus, our local service center. That goes back to the, to the manufacturer, they would become involved at that point. And they were simply telling us during our, during our visit out there, how they were trying to convince Fairbanks to keep the truck there and they would build the parts and send them up to them, try to get that truck fixed as soon as possible.
Okay, and then our, our mechanic is also able to work on that truck?
Yes.
Service wise?
Yep, I'll let Dennis time, if he wants to chime in here and talk a little bit about the, the truck and it's very similar to a normal over-the-road truck and how the chassis set up.
Basically, what I would be doing is working on the chassis components of the truck. So everything from the frame down, driveline components, that type of stuff. If they have some electrical issues with the, the cab itself, those are some things that I would do. I would be steered away from any of the, any of the issues with the actual aerial itself. Any of the hydraulic issues with the aerial that, that would require special certification to work on and that, a special, special training to do that. So that's something that I wouldn't be involved in. So I would just be basically the routine maintenance of the vehicle and odds and ends on it. I would try to help them out the best I could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bur. Commissioner Littman has his hand raised.
I got a couple of questions on the truck we have now, did, was, if my memory shows me correctly, did we buy that used, was it demo?
Yes, the current unit was a demo unit.
How many miles has that got on it right now?
So the dash was replaced four years ago, four or five years ago. I don't have an exact number, currently it has like five thousand eight hundred miles on it, but that's on the new dash. So I don't know what, what the actual mileage is at this point.
It's just getting broken in, right?
With the new dash, yep.
The other question I've got, let's see, the miles and used on the new one, is that, how many cylinders is that? Is that an aluminum or a stainless or steel block on the engine?
I'll let Dennis answer that question.
It's a, it's a cast iron block, it's six-cylinder bu, uh, block. It's a fif, fifteen-liter diesel engine. Basically looking at, it's, it comes out at six hundred horsepower and two hundred and fifty foot pounds of torque. It is considered the industry standard in diesels as far as the, I guess you could say the lowest maintenance cost. They have the, the longest interval with in between their maintenance where you can run them compared to the other manufacturers out there, being Caterpillar, Detroit Diesel. They are considered that this Cummings engine is considered to be one of the best of severe duty engines on the market. This particular one is specifically designed for severe duty applications and they also make this engine for over-the-road trucks. But this particular one is made for long-term idle, the type of things that this fire truck will be put through.
Okay, so you're saying that's an aluminum block?
No, the, the block I believe is cast iron.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, answers a couple of my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Littman.
Are there any other questions for this group of people before, I think Holly has, was going to talk about, about financing, correct, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing now, Holly, would you like to tell us how we're going to finance this truck, please?
Sure, my presentation is not nearly as exciting as Ryan's. But basically, through, what we found out was that we can, we can do, we can get a pretty significant discount on the purchase of this truck by doing a prepayment, so we're actually going to prepay for the truck while they build it. So I sent out quotes for doing an installment purchase agreement financing, which is basically the vehicle that a city is authorized to finance over an install, installment basis. Sent out quotes from our local banks and there's a summary of those quotes for financing in your packet. And the low bid for financing is Farmer State Bank at one point eight nine percent. So included in your packet, you, you received a resolution that was put together that basically authorizes the city to, to develop, there's several documents that have to be put in place to do an installment purchase agreement. And so there is a, a resolution that you have in your pa, in your packet that authorizes entering into that, into that financial contract. The one that you have in your packet lists under the third paragraph, it lists emergency vehicles. But actually, what we found out a little bit later was that that needed to be, needs to be Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC. So I have a revised resolution for you that it's very, a very minor change, just changes that in that third paragraph to Rosenberg, Minnesota, but basically gives the authority, covers all the legal requirements for the city to enter into the installment purchase agreement with, it ends up being a kind of a three-party agreement between the city, Rosenbauer, Minnesota and Farmer State Bank. Basically, the bank will pay Rosenbauer and then we will pay Farmer State Bank over time, over fifteen years. So that's all I would say about that. We haven't done an installment purchase agreement with Farmer State Bank before. So it was nice that they came in with such a good, good price on the financing. I think it's a pretty good time right now with the interest rates being low. And I think the only other thing I would mention is just that the, this, this type of financing is guaranteed by the city, the full faith and credit of the city is behind it. So the city can't enter into a loan like a typical like car loan, like, like we would do personally. We have to follow specific rules for that. Oh, and the other thing I would add, if I could just add one, one other thing, I realized it's going to be a long time before we get the new truck. But I would ask for, for approval to, to sell the, the other ladder truck at the time when we place a new one in service.
Okay. Ryan, just a quick question from me and then Commissioner Good has a question. What's the warranty on our truck, on this new truck?
So there's a variety of them that come with them. So there's a general one-year warranty, the engine and transmission both come with five-year warranties. The frame of this truck actually is a lifetime warranty. The cab's a ten-year warranty. Lifetime warranty and structural integrity of the, of the apartments and body. Twenty-five year corrosion warranty, a ten-year unlimited paint warranty, twenty-five year aerial structural integrity warranty and a five-year waterway warranty.
Okay, the comment I was going to make, at least we'll have this truck paid off before some of those warranties expire.
Yes.
And Commissioner Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. With regard to the financing, you know, it's nice that Farmer State Bank is doing that for one point eight nine percent. One point eight nine percent over fifteen years against one point two million comes out to about three hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. So while we're real excited to save forty-three thousand dollars by paying upfront, we're also accepting the interest payment of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Just thought I might mention that, you know, we have, it's unfortunate, we don't have a greater general fund, fund balance, because if we took that one point two million against the two point five that's currently in the fund balance position in the general fund, we'd reduce that fund balance by about fifty percent, which is not a good thing to do, but it would still put us at a fund balance level of maybe about seventeen percent versus twenty-seven. So, you know, just a, just a numbers game out there. Putting it in the payment program at one point eight nine percent. Saves your forty-three thousand off the price of the truck, but you get to pay three hundred and forty-four thousand in interest. So there you go, I just wanted to bring that up so everybody had a chance to be aware that you know, buying the truck over time still costs us some money. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I guess the only thing I would add to that is if we did wait to find the other option, if we didn't prepay it, then we would wait to finance it, in which case I would need even brought a resolution to you this evening. I would have waited until such time, well, we probably would have talked about it, but I wouldn't really have bothered to get quotes for financing until a year later for when we actually were going to need the funds to pay for the vehicle. And I don't know, everybody keeps saying interest rates are going to go up at some point, so.
Yeah, I'm not just, I'm not disagreeing with the financing part. I'm just bringing to attention the fact that there is I'm just bringing to attention the fact that there is a cost associated with the financing.
Well, ten years, ten years from now, it might be nice to have a one point eight nine percent loan if we're getting.
Well, you know, if if things, uh, I was gonna ask this question, Holly, if uh. If there was a. A potential surplus of funds available uh, or a windfall of some sort. Can we pay down on the principal?
Yes, we can pay this. That's part of the law. That's part of the law requires, um. It requires, um. Us to be able to prepay.
Okay, so we can pay down on the principal or pay early?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done that before. We had a previous installment purchase agreement that we ended up paying off early.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Uh, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Uh, thank you. It's, I've I've got a. Observation and a couple of questions. Both of them are for Holly. I guess John, uh, Commissioner Good probably. Answer that for me. There's no early payoff penalties and that kind of stuff, uh, I'm guessing either. Okay, um, there were two of them in there from Huntington Bank, one like two and a half, one at two and a quarter. I know neither one of them are are we're using. But why, why would they submit two? And what's the difference in them?
Um, they had included, let me see. Um, oh, I didn't elaborate on what those options were, did I? I didn't bother to put that in there since they weren't the lowest ones. It had to do with, um, I think it had to do with. How much you could prepay at a certain time, as I recall.
Oh, okay.
Dig back into those, sorry.
Oh, no worries. I just looked at how they have two for the same amount, same truck, same everything, but.
They had some different, some different types of options in there and.
Okay.
They weren't the lowest, so.
And an observation for uh, Ryan and to Commissioner Burr's point about the weight of the truck. We're getting the heaviest, most well-built truck for the least amount.
Yes.
Cool. And if if that's your observation, um, I had a another statement that was about financing. You know, we talk about all this financing and Commissioner Good was talking about if we had a windfall, could we do this? Could we do that? Um, I'm gonna harken back to something that I do a lot on is the is motor vehicles and this kind of thing. And I've brought it up before about moratoriums. And looking back at the last three years, we've had, um, minus the lease payment obligations that we've had, that we've uh, done in that particular fund. Um, you know, we've spent on average about eight hundred and. Uh, I'd say about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in in vehicles and equipment. And that's not counting the lease payment obligations that we have. This year, we're, we've got in our budget. For nine hundred and thirty thousand, which would essentially take care of about seventy-six percent of the cost of the uh, fire truck. Um, I said it before and I'll say it again, that I think that um, some type of moratorium on vehicle and. Equipment purchases might be pertinent to some things like fire truck purchases and those types of things to to maybe help out in the long run. Um, I don't know if I'm just. Uh, beating a dead horse here or what, but um, just something to think about for the for the future, I suppose. With that, I yield.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions from the commission? If not, then I ask Andrew to see if our audience has any questions.
Those attending via the Zoom meeting, if you have any questions on this agenda item or comments, um, please use the raise hand feature and we'll recognize you. I seen on Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, if there are no other questions from the commission for this group of people, uh, what say the commission?
Well, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak up first. I see that there are two potential motions to deal with the purchase of this fire truck. Uh, the first motion, I think, uh, is out of order. I think, uh, if we, if we. Say that we're gonna do the authorizing authorization of the installment purchase. Uh, that's uh. Tantamount to saying we're buying the truck. So why don't we say we're buying the truck first? And then we'll, uh, then we'll authorize paying for it. How do you, how do you feel about that?
Go for it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I heard that I moved that the Sturgis City Commission approved the purchase. Of a mid-mountain aerial fire truck from Emergency Vehicles Plus in the amount of one million. Two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars as presented by. Our Director of Public Safety, Ryan Banazak, in an extremely well-done manner.
Who's who supported it?
Commissioner Wiki.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to approve the purchase and support by uh, Commissioner Wiki. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes. Thank you.
Very much.
And for the second motion?
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to uh, commit our uh, Controller, Ali, to a contract. Uh, I would move that the Sturgis City Commission adopt the resolution. Authorizing the installment purchase agreement as amended.
Okay, we have support.
All support.
Thank you, sir. Um, we have a motion by Commissioner Good to adopt the resolution, support by Vice Mayor Mullins. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, we remove our uh.
Would you like? I'm sorry, would you like to approve the sale of the existing ladder truck at at a future date? Or would you like it to come back at a later date for approval to to sell the, um. Unit seven eighteen.
If someone would like to make a motion, let's get it done now. So it's done with.
I'll make a motion to sell it.
Okay, Commissioner Smith makes the motion to sell. Okay, before you, go ahead, Commissioner Littman.
Uh. Uh, go ahead. I'll, I'll talk to you about it later.
Okay, do we have support to, uh, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith to sell the fire truck, our current fire truck. Do we have support?
I will support.
Support by uh, Vice Mayor Mullins. Um. Before I ask for a roll call. Commissioner Good, you had your hand raised.
I did, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that uh, Commissioner Smith's uh, motion. Uh, included the fact that we would be selling that at a future date upon receipt of the new truck.
Right.
Well, I didn't figure we'd get rid of it before we got the new one.
Well, you never know. I mean, somebody will come in and say, hey, you guys said you'd sell it.
And it's unit seven eighteen, right, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, so we're understanding, we're not gonna sell it today. We're gonna sell it when we get the new one.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, before I move on to the next agenda, Ryan, Andy, Dennis and Holly, thank you for all the work you put into this. It we, it makes us a type of decision very easy to make. Thank you. Um, our next agenda item is the item number ten E would be the T E D F. Grant Application Resolution and Support, Barry.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so. Um, just a second here. Um. So, as you know, Kathy Knapp, Andrew Cook, a number of staff have been working on the proposed Project White development. Uh, out to try to fully develop out Stapleton Industrial Park. And we are uh, planning to apply for Transportation Economic Development. Fund Grant Category A to improve Haynes Boulevard and Peterson Circle. Uh, i- is part of that process. Um, this application needs to be in next week. Um, so we would be uh. Submitting this uh. Grant application, which provides the opportunity to get funding for road projects based on their connection or job creation. Of the project. Um, the project, as it's currently constructed, would rehabilitate Haynes Boulevard. From North Centerville to the end of uh, Haynes and then. Uh, we would do a millinery surface on Peterson Circle. Uh, in addition to that, and the reason we are doing both streets is basically they're, based on the initial site plan that they have presented. Their uh, employees would be gaining access to their future site from Peterson. And then most of the heavier vehicles would be uh, be utilizing Haynes Boulevard um, as well. So. Um, with that, um. If you've been out there, both of these roads are in very poor condition. And they're gonna need a significant upgrade. So that's why we're applying for this grant. Um, there's a resolution that we need to s- to supply as part of the grant to basically state that the city. Is willing to support and fund uh, at permitted level. Um, right now. The estimate that includes design, construction engineering and contingency is uh, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, and this grant does require a local match. Um, however, it is one of the more lucrative um. Grant applications, which includes or allows you to include. Cost of design and other engineering, as well as some staff time that has been designated. For the project, assuming we get the grant. Uh, based on the challenges in getting this grant, uh, James Hisong is recommending that we admit the grant. With a thirty-five percent match amount, even though the minimum percentage level is twenty percent. Um, that thirty-five match amount would equal a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um. We anticipate, assuming that the city receives the category A grant. The majority of the funds would not be expended until the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, uh, because. Um, it's gonna be a while, I think, before we're gonna know anything about the grant first off. And then probably the only expenses we would potentially see this year would be design, the beginning of design. To get this project going. It's a fairly straightforward project. It's not terribly difficult design. Um. But with that, I guess. Um, to try to answer any questions regarding we're asking of you this evening.
Thank you, Barry. Um, are there any questions from the commissioner on this agenda item? Uh, for Barry, uh, Commissioner Burr.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, Barry, you said that the uh, the circle's not in real bad shape. Uh. Inch and a half mill with a two inch overlay. And you said that the road is considerably considerably more. Uh. In need of improvement. Does it, are you putting curbing in there, gutters? Uh, is that the? The upgrade in it? Because I mean, it's a straight road and it seems like all you have to do is basically mill it and. Uh, put another layer over that. Is there more involved in that?
No, uh, I don't, I think the estimate was included in in your packet, Commissioner Burr. Uh, we we're not intending to uh, do any curb and gutter on the project. I will say, uh, little. Didn't mention this earlier, that. Uh, this industrial park, these two roads were built in nineteen ninety-five and as we went back and reviewed. Uh, the level of construction as to how they built these roads. Uh, we would find that to be deficient nowadays. Um. The initial part from Centerville out to basically where Johnson mold. Is was built with only six inches of gravel and three inches of asphalt. Which is pretty substandard, if you think about it for some, uh, for a truck, basically a significant truck. Use uh, on a road. Um, so what we're looking at, and then I guess the second part of that is out in front of secure domes when that was built. At least that one, we put four inches of asphalt on uh, back in two thousand and three. Um, but the proposed treatment on Haynes is basically to grind the entirety of that asphalt surface from end to end. Into the gravel um, base that's there to create a thicker base. For the road aggregate base, and then we're looking to do five inches of asphalt over the entirety of Haynes Boulevard. So it's this, it's a significant rehabilitation of the road to create a thicker ag base. And then a thicker asphalt base to accommodate all the truck traffic that's gonna be going in and out of that development. As well as the rest of the other facilities that are out there.
Okay, um, so. You say there's only a six inch gravel base. So you're going to like dig down farther down into the hardpan and put more of a. Uh, gravel base down? Or you're just gonna raise it up higher?
We're raising it up higher by pulverizing the asphalt that's there into the gravel. Um, I'm not removing any materials, which is a cost savings to not have to remove it, but it helps. With the overall support structure of that roadway. Um, there is, in addition to that, I went out there uh, a week and a half, two weeks ago and looked at. Um, drainage on the this road and and the ditching is very flat. So we're going to look at improving the ditching to get that water away from this, the. This basically the base of the roadway as well. So that it has at least drainage into a ditch, more like a a country style road than what we have right now. Um, and you mentioned I that Peterson wasn't, that I said that Peterson wasn't in as bad a shape. It's in pretty bad shape. It's just, it's not going to see the type of vehicles on it that Haynes will see on it.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, um, hopefully that, um. I'm sure you're aware of problems in the past with some road repairs in the shoulders and the mowability of them. Um, please keep that in mind. They have to be able to mow it easily too and maintain it. Because the city does do the mowing out there.
I think, uh. The Commissioner Burr, I think when the ditching uh, cross section I saw today. Would be for Haynes is a one-on-six slope, because we do have a fair amount of right of way on Haynes. And then it's a one-on-five slope for Peterson.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Burr. Uh, Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Mullins, please.
Sir, uh, just a comment, I guess, to Barry and the commission as a whole, you know, we've. Um, this whole uh, project white that's gonna be happening out here. Um, is causing us to spend a lot of money on on uh, projects, infrastructure, things that are needed, which is, which is really good thing. And I'm excited about these things to come. And, um, you know, the lift station that we're talking about was what, seven fifty to a million? And then this road project for another hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars with the grant. Um, um, exciting times going on and and I'm happy about it. I just sure hope that uh, everything goes through with Project White, so.
Thank you, sir. Um, any other comments for Barry on this agenda item from the commission? If not, Andrew, would you like to see if our audience has any comments?
Yes, once again, for those joining us via the Zoom meeting, if you have any public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature. Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Andrew. Um, seeing no other hands raised, uh, what say the commission on this agenda item?
Uh. I would like to move that the Sturgis City Commission. Adopt. And support the funding level committed for the MDOT. T E D F grant project at Stapleton Industrial Park as presented.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith to adopt the resolution of support. Do we have a support on this uh, motion?
Support by Commissioner Klinger.
Cause support by Minister, Commissioner Klinger, thank you. Uh, roll call, please. Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Malone, Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, and very thank you for the work you're doing on this project. Uh, at this time, I'll take a motion to suspend, to suspend, suspend this, our current meeting to go into a Sturgis Housing Development. Uh, Corporation Meeting. Do you have a motion uh support or motion for this?
So moved.
Do I support? Who seconded?
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Thank you, sir. Do we need a roll call for this, Mr. Rhodes?
I think so. We'll do it real quick. Commissioner Klinger. Hi. Uh, Commissioner Smith.
Hi.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Good.
All right.
Commissioner Malone, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Okay, our city commission meeting is in recess.
All right. Um, I believe, Michael, you're up for this. You're you're muted, Michael.
Couldn't go meeting without it. I will go ahead and call to order the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation meeting. We have one item of business. Quick claim deed, Barry Cox.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners. Um, so for the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation, uh. For those not around at that particular point in time, uh, the organization of the corporation sold. To the former Ram products building to Cobalt Holdings back in December of twenty-ten after the city decided. We weren't gonna move our Public Services Building out to that particular site. Uh, when we, when that was sold, uh, a fifty-foot strip of property was retained. Uh, or excluded from the sale for the purposes of having it dedicated as North Centerville Road Public Right-of-Way. The deed as written, which I believe was included in your packet. Um, indicates that the property, that fifty-foot strip. Was meant for public right-of-way. However, it was never transferred into the city of Sturgis's ownership to dedicate it as public right-of-way. Uh, so in your packet is a quick clean deed to transfer the fifty-foot by seven hundred and seventy. Foot piece of property to the city of Sturgis, and I'll take any questions you may have regarding that transfer.
Have any questions? If not, uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I would, I moved that the Sturgis Housing Development. Commission approve the quick claim deed of property along North Centerville Road to the city of Sturgis. As presented and authorized President Michael Hughes to sign all necessary documents.
Our motion from Director Heil, second?
Second, back to uh. Board member Klinger.
Director Klinger, thank you. All right, all those, well, I guess we'll have to do roll call, huh?
The roll call, uh, Director Littman.
Yes.
Director Wiki.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Yes.
Director Malone, Director Burr.
Yes.
Director Good.
Hi.
Director Mullins.
Yes.
Director Klinger.
Hi.
Director Heil.
Yes.
And Director Hughes.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Very good. Thank you, directors. I will go ahead and enter in the meeting.
Hey, we are. We need to take a motion to go back into our our general uh meeting here, our commission meeting?
I believe you can reconvene it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with without a motion?
Correct.
Okay, we are now back into our regular commission meeting. We are now to the ca- Commissioner and Staff Comments. Let's start with here, uh, staff. Um, Josh is still with us. Josh, do you have any other comments?
Mayor, huh?
Another.
Yeah, there's still the right-of-way dedication.
Right-of-way dedication. Oops, I'm sorry. Did not see that. I apologize. All right. I'm reading my quick notes. Okay, the right-of-way dedication, uh, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, given the action that just took place, uh, the Sturgis Housing Development Corporation. Um, we are looking for the city commission to approve this fifty by one hundred, or excuse me, fifty by seven hundred and seventy. Foot strip of land as a public right-of-way. Um. In your packet is a site map that indicates the parcel there request, we are requesting for dedication. Uh, if you have any questions regarding the the location of that, um. And the draft resolution to uh take that action.
Okay, any questions for Barry on this uh resolution? See, now let's say the commission.
Mr. Mayor, the city commission adopted declaration of right-of-way resolution for uh North Centerville Road as presented.
I have Vice Mayor Mullins uh uh requesting to adopt. Do I have support?
Support from Commissioner Klinger.
Thank you, sir. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
All right.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all. Uh, now we'll move into this uh Commissioner and Staff Comments. Uh, let's start with staff first. Uh, Josh left us, it looks like. Uh, Will, do you have any other comments you'd like to make tonight?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for all the things, all the work you do for us here. Uh, Ryan, would you like to make any other comments?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you for your guys' support on the truck.
Is Andy still there?
He's gone. I sent him.
Um, Barry.
Uh, just a real quick thing for uh staff or city commission. If you haven't been out to city city sub number two uh lately. Uh, there's a lot of activity out here.
All right. Thank you, Barry. Uh, Mr. Rhodes.
Uh, I'll be sending all those folks tax bills this year on those new houses, so. Exciting.
All right. Uh, Roger, our city attorney.
Uh, the only thing, Mayor, is I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to participate in the meeting tonight. Uh, this is my birthday, and I couldn't think of a better way to sum it.
Well, happy birthday, Roger.
Well, thank you.
That's just sad.
All the people who love him.
Good guess, guy.
Well, thanks for being with us. Um, Holly.
He beat me to it. I was gonna say happy birthday, Roger. As Kelly House Stettler announced that today at Kiwanis, so.
All right.
Congratulations. Nothing further.
Thank you. Um, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I have no comments. I I did want to note, I believe we had one person in the Zoom meeting, um. Who was interested in making public comment earlier in the meeting, but came in a little bit late. I was wondering if you wanted to allow him to make a public comment if he still had one?
If he is still with us, let's let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, uh, if if there is someone, uh, if you're still here and you want to make public comment, please use the raise hand feature at this time. I'm not seeing him raise his hand, so perhaps uh perhaps he's not interested, or he he might have checked out on us, Mr. Mayor, so thank you. Thank you for the indulgence, though.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Uh, how about our city manager?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I do have a couple, hopefully, quick things. I had sent out uh some proposed dates for budget process. Uh, to you, and I wanted to confirm those dates, so we'd be looking at May fifth. Uh, and that would be our planning session. We typically kind of do a state of the city financial update, talk about capital improvement plan. And then uh we have another day of June second, which would be our primary budget work session. And then uh June sixteenth, we are second budget work session, and we. Focus on uh enterprise funds, utility rates. Um, last year, I think we held those meetings at four-thirty and five. Um, I'm not sure that works for the group, but um just want to confirm that those dates work. And uh get some direction on what time you'd like to start the meeting.
Uh, Commissioner Good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, Michael, when I got those dates, I just wrote them in my calendar. Um, it's all good.
Do any of our other commissioners have any co- uh conflicts with these dates and? I had, on my note, was five-thirty. Is five-thirty a good time for everyone? It looks like I got a lot of heads nodding, Michael. It looks like it's, everything should work.
Very good. Five-thirty it is. I'll I'll, of course, send out a reminder, but we'll go with those dates. And it feels like May fifth is gonna come quickly. Um, the other thing I just wanted to mention and and uh I I believe most of you are aware. But we had approached Sturgis Township uh to contribute on upgrading. Portion of Bojan and South Nottawa to an all-season road. And uh they did approve that, so our our costs um is going to be twenty-five thousand dollars less the. It's like three thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents, so. Um, I did thank George Morris personally this morning. He's the Sturgis Township Supervisor, but I. Really appreciate uh the Township Board's support of the project and. Uh, they're, they've been a great partner to work with and uh just wanted to make sure I recognize them for that, so. Uh, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Let's go to uh Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Burr.
Thank you, Honor. I just have one thing. It's. Uh, I had a little bit of technical difficulties when uh the nomination for Kathy Abs came up. And didn't get to vote, so I would like to have uh. Mr. Rhodes take in, put that from a absent to a yay. To have her serve on the board.
Done.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Good.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of things tonight. Um, first of all, uh, in our packet. We had the uh sub-recipient agreement between the city of Sturgis. And Northern Great Lakes Initiative doing business that is Northern Initiatives. Uh, I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to peruse that uh agreement at all. But I've seen some alphabet soup in my day, and this is probably one of the best bowls of alphabet soup I've ever seen. I have to commend our staff. For being able to wade through this bureaucratic nightmare. That is an agreement so that we can loan money. I just think it's amazing what has to be done by our staff. In dealing with the state of Michigan and any other uh entities that provide us with documents like this. It's incredible. Um, and then I'll move on to my next item. Which happens to be with regard to the um. Community Development Department. I believe that uh, you know, four years ago, we passed the ordinance for uh medical cannabis, and now we're, we've made some of. Amendments to that tonight, but uh nonetheless, four years have passed and and there's still no uh open uh. Provisioning centers within the community, albeit a number of special land uses have been given, but uh. Nonetheless, there's a, there's any variety of reasons for that, and no blame lays in any one place. So I want to make sure that's clear. But I believe that uh we, as a city commission. Can aid in our community's development process. By entertaining the opportunity to propose uh um. That we put out an RFP. For Plan Review Services to be provided by a third party. Uh, currently, our um trade. Uh, applications, that being electrical, plumbing, and mechanical. Are sent out to the state of Michigan for their uh review of those plans for. Those three trades, and then the building review is done in-house. I believe we could streamline that um and take it away from the state of Michigan. And place it in the hands of a private entity. Um, we certainly are not. Um. Shy to utilize uh engineering services for streets and uh. Construction projects of of any wide variety, so. Um, why should we be fearful of or adverse to? The potential of utilizing a fee-based service for plan reviews. Now, um, that does a couple of different things. One. It may, and I'd say there's no promise to that, but it may in turn. Make it a little more expedient for the developer. Than the utilization of the state of Michigan. Um, in addition to that, it can be established as a fee-based activity. Wherein the developer comes in and says, okay, I'm gonna build building X. Here's my blueprints. They include the building plans. Electrical, plumbing, uh HVAC and all of that, and then our uh Development Department takes. And segregates those trade packages and sends them off to the state. We could send them off to a private entity. And that developer then would pay the cost of that review. In other words, uh, I'm gonna build building X. Here's my plans, and here's a check for X number of dollars to cover the plan reviews. And so it's really a pass-through. Um, we're not uh. Uh, increasing our budgetary expenditures for that activity. Secondly. Um, it would free up uh Will Pritchard. Uh, to provide uh additional services within that Community Development Department and take that stress of. Uh, all those plan reviews. Let's, let's take, for example, we have coming up a Project White and Project Black. Um, the amount of hours that uh Will Pritchard may have to spend on those plans could be uh astronomical. But with a third service, you know, a third-party service. Uh, Will can concentrate on uh getting them through the Planning Commission for Site Plan Review. And uh walking them through the Utilities Department, Fire Safety, et cetera, et cetera. And while the plans are in another person's hands, being reviewed by that third party. At the expense of Project White's developers. So I think that uh really, um. We should consider uh our staff taking a look at this, the potential. Of a third-party plan review system. And uh, Mike, I'd like you to weigh in on this a little bit, if you might. Thank you.
Again, um, and I would, I would assume that would mean not only plan review, but inspection services. I think they probably go hand in hand. Um. I I definitely think it's worth evaluating. Um. There are definitely pros and cons of using the state, and uh I think. Um, and Will can speak to this better, but um as things have gotten busier, you know, there could be delays with. Plan review, sometimes it's it's self-imposed, but um. You know, the one thing I think about is that I've, I feel like not just with Project White and Project Black, but. Other potential developments out there, we are gonna get busier and. We we do want to make sure that we are streamlined and we can process these projects. Um, it's something that I've been thinking about coincidentally. Uh, I think to Commissioner Good's concern. My my biggest concern is making sure that if we look at another option or alternative, that. It really delivers on being, you know, consistent and streamlined. Um, but. We won't know that, of course, unless we evaluate it, but I I will say it's a, it is definitely a key part in the. In the process of development of um going through. of, um, going through plan review. Um, and we, there's a lot of things we can't control in that process, but the things that we can control, we should be, we should try to be very good at. Um, and so, all that said, I, I definitely think it's worth evaluating.
So, uh, Mike, would it be, um, out of place, or maybe, uh, Mr. Mayor, I should be asking you this question, would it be out of place to, uh, ask for a general consensus of the commission to ask the staff to, um, probe this issue and, uh, make an evaluation, uh, that they can bring back a report to us with regard to utilization of a third-party plan review and/or, uh, in, um, inspection service?
Um, I think what my conversation with Mike on this was, is he is planning to do that already, correct, Mike?
Well, what I, what I would say is that we were, it's something that's on the table to consider. Um, if the, if the commission wants to direct us to do that, I think the appropriate thing to see is if there's consensus. Um, and, and most of you know, I mean, we've been looking at all kinds of different ways to improve our processes. One thing I think we're getting close to is online permitting, and I think that's gonna be really beneficial. Um, we, we have not, you know, specifically targeted this, but it's, it's certainly something that we've, you know, at least I've thought about for a long time, because I'm certainly aware that communities do it differently, and you're gonna find a lot of communities use the state, you'll find they use, you know, a third-party company that's kind of provides the entire package, or they might just have individual contracts with trade inspectors, and I, I think that occurs a lot when, you know, let's say they can't, they can't find somebody to do, let's say, the electrical plan review and inspection, so they'll use the state, but they might use um, an individual contractor for mechanical, there's a lot of different ways that you could do it. Um, and so I, yeah, I have at least considered that maybe there are other options out there in our quest to try to make things better.
Okay, well, let's give Michael, let's ask the question, does, do we have consensus to allow Michael to look at this into a deeper way?
I think it's a great idea to look into, at least, yeah.
Shake your hands or give us a thumbs up, let us know if this is a good, good way to go. I think you've got consensus, Michael.
Can I ask the question?
The commission says.
Yes. Can I ask one question of you, Mike? Um, in this, uh, John talked about it being just a pass-through cost, th- this is something like for the inspection process that the state does now, that we would have somebody else contracted to do a third-party outfit?
Uh, one way to do it is to, is to contract a third-party, and you would, you would, typically the setup is that you would share in the, in the fee. Uh, I think in most cases, they're gonna receive, you know, the, the majority of the fee, but some cities even collect a portion of that. Um, so you could have, you know, one company provide all those services. Uh, it, many of the townships in St. Joseph County, they have individual contractors that they work with. So they might have one person that they, they have a contract with to do electrical, another to do mechanical and so forth.
So they'd just be on an on-call, it wouldn't necessarily be somebody that would be in City Hall every day.
Um, that's right, I mean, if, I, I would say that they're gonna be in our building a lot just because of the activity, but, but you're correct, in, in the sense that if they didn't have a project that they were working on, they, they wouldn't come in, so they're, they would, it wouldn't, it would be a, like a contractual arrangement rather than, um, you know, hiring of, of an employee for the city. And, and similar to hiring a consultant for a street, I suppose, though we never collect any revenue from that.
So would we pay anything in addition to just part of the fees that we're, we're charging for, um, this?
I, I don't know that, I really don't know the answer to that, I, I would, I would have to do more research. Um, I'm most familiar with the setup of, um, you know, they have a plan review fee, the, the con- contracted person has a plan review fee um, and an inspection fee, and every time they do that, they, they basically receive a percentage. That's what I'm familiar with, I, I can't really speak to, and, and by the way, there's, in Michigan, there's not a ton of companies that do this. The, the primary company, um, you might find some small organizations out there, but I think, I think what happened is when there wasn't a lot of development activity, they, they struggled and they went away. Um, but the, the one that I'm most familiar with that's used by a lot of communities is, is called SafeBill, and they're a national company, and, and they're, they're used quite a bit on the east side of the state. And, and I'm not certain how their contracts work.
I would assume there probably is some kind of retainer type of thing.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I wouldn't be surprised if there was a retainer and they received part of the fees. Um, but that setup is, SafeBill's fairly new to Michigan, I, I would say in the last, you know, eight or ten years. Um, and, and so I'm, I'm not as familiar with, with how their contracts work.
Um, yeah, it's a good thing, and I, I, I mean, I'd love to hear more about it, so it'd be really cool to hear.
Okay. Okay, uh, John, any further comments?
Uh, no, no further comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Klinger.
Uh, you know, just, uh, it's very encouraging to have all these titles, uh, to represent myself, Commissioner, Director. I got called boss the other day in front of my kids at the store, and it was just, they asked about it. Pretty, uh, pretty encouraging, so, uh, you know, just, just, uh, enjoying, uh, all the development and all the growth that we get to see here between Project White and Black and all of our developments with progress in our ordinances. Happy times, lots and, lots more to come, I think, too.
All right, thank you, sir, Commissioner Littman.
Well, uh, the weather is peaking, so to speak, it's sticking its nose through, it might hit maybe sixty next week. But other than that, I'm looking forward to some good weather.
All right, sir, thank you, Commissioner Smith.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Wiki.
I got a question, I was traveling downtown and then also on South Ottawa, and uh, as far as the trees, you know, the, all the blooms, the white blooms are beautiful, but I'm also seeing, I don't know, maybe forty percent of our trees have nothing on them. Are those trees dead, or are they a different variety? Just wondering.
Well, um, I actually think they're a different variety. Are we talking downtown?
Downtown and on South Ottawa, there's still nothing, no foliage whatsoever on a lot of trees.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure on South Ottawa, I'm, I'm deferring all three questions to Commissioner Burr.
Would too.
Hi, assuming that was the next point.
Uh, those are ginkgo trees, and they bloom out a little bit later than a lot of the other trees. It's not, uh, they will be leaving out probably once the weather stabilizes and it's a little bit warmer.
Okay. What about South Ottawa?
You mean all the, all the way down the street?
I'm, I'm talking about the, they're fairly new, they're beside the coffee shop and everything, all those little trees, there's nothing on those.
The, those, um, my best guess is those might be ginkgos too, because we, we try to continue that streetscape if they're not blooming. I, I don't think they're dead, at least, I'm gonna go down and check them after the meeting.
They are ginkgo trees.
Yeah, I mean, the ones downtown, those are fairly mature trees that I'm not seeing anything to, so. Okay, just, I was just curious, I didn't know if there was some tree disease that went through I didn't know about, or somebody, you know, poisoning our trees or what, but, all right, that was it.
All right, thank you, sir, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just, just quickly, I just wanted to touch on, uh, one of the things that were in the Proclamations portion of the, of the, uh, agenda, that was the Fair Housing Month proclamation, I know we didn't spend much time on it, but it is important, and, uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, comment on it, just to say that it was, um, that is very, very important, and it, it's, it's a shame to me that it happened sooner, I mean, it, it took really the death of, of Dr. King to really get it pushed through, um, Congress. Um, after many times of trying and trying to do it, um, it took his death to ultimately get it done, and that's, I, I find sad, and I, one thing that I did look up this week as well, and that was, um, our state of Michigan, and from what I saw, it showed that all nineteen of our representatives and both of our senators all voted in favor, no matter what party they were from, and I found that to be uplifting. Um, the other thing is, is, uh, Mike, I'm wondering about that, uh, Sturgis Township, uh, agreeing to pay part of that road thing, if there could be some kind of a, of a thank you sent from the commission, uh, possibly. And last but not least, uh, Roger Bird, you, uh, you must be pretty lame if you want to spend your birthday here on Zoom meeting with us, happy birthday to you.
Thank, thank you, I, uh, gladly accept your comment.
Well, we'll send a thank you, uh, letter from the commission.
All right, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I just have one comment or just a piece of information for the commission. We are going to, I've asked, uh, Vice Mayor Mullins to get with Andrew to start sending out the ser- to the, the survey for Michael. His review is coming up, so I wanna get this started, and, um, I wanna ask, I've asked, uh, Vice Mayor Mullins to head this up. Uh, and I'd like to get this survey back before the, Michael, wasn't it, when we talked about it, was it June first meeting?
I thought what you said was the-
Was the last meeting in May?
May?
Last meeting in May?
Correct.
Okay, I, we'd like to get these surveys back by the last meeting in May. So I'll let you know that these are gonna come out, and if you've got questions, I wanna have you direct them, if the question's on the survey, direct them to Vice Mayor Mullins, if you would, please. All right, on that, I will take a motion to go into closed session to talk about the purchase of property. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Littman, do I have support?
Support.
Or support.
By Commissioner Burr, we have, uh, a motion by Commissioner Littman, support by Mr. Mr. Burr, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Hi.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
We're in closed session.
Andrew, you should go be able to, Andrew sent us a link to go into the closed session meeting, so we will see you over there.
Skip, you'll need to leave this meeting.
Okay. Is that the minus?
Uh, no, it'll be, if you take your mouse all the way to the bottom of your screen, at the very right side, there should be a little button that says leave.
Okay.
You see it?
Yep, I clicked it.
Clicked that, well, you, you must not have got it, because I wouldn't see anymore.
Hit it, click it.
Hit it, click it. Hit it, click it. Hit it, click it. Hit it, click it. Hit it, click it.
Commissioner Good, you've had a scene change every time we've come in and out of meetings.
I don't want to bore you, Commissioner Littman.
Looking for Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Littman. And there's Commissioner Burr. I know, Mary's got to get Skip to go get over here. There comes Skip. We are waiting for Commissioner Smith. We lost, we lost Commissioner Littman, but we've got Commissioner Smith with us now. Here he comes.
Here I am.
Alright. Um. Would, would Commissioner Lake make a motion on the discussion we had in closed session?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the commission approved the purchase agreement. Sale in option of four lots to the Westview Capital.
Okay, do I have support?
Support.
Okay, I think Vice Mayor Mullins made the support. Roll call, please.
Uh, Your Honor, I, I just want to be clear, was, I might not have heard that correctly, but purchase of four lots and option of four lots.
Is that what you said, Commissioner Klinger?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what he said. And we had support by, by Vice Mayor Mullins. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Aye.
Commissioner Littman.
Aye.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yep.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Are there any other comments left that Commissioner Lake can make? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close this session, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Reminder, large item drop off recycling this weekend, hazardous waste recycling this weekend, guys.
Yeah, I read that in the paper.
Yep.
Read that, okay. Thank you for that note, note. Again, seeing no other comments, we are closed and done. Thank you. Night all.
Night all. Adios.